For the 19th, 2025. If everyone could join me for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have minutes from January 8th and January 22nd.
Need to approve January 8th's minutes.
I will second Nate Unhunra. Any discussion?
I would like to see some changes on the second page toward the the seventh sentence from the bottom. I think we need to add Chair Cohen asked if we are looking at funding more space or are we trying to cut taxes? They aren't necessarily the same thing.
That's the twenty second.
That's the
I want to add that.
That's the twenty second.
Oh, I thought it was added in the eighth.
I was like, this is all just motion.
Oh, okay. The pages are collated. I'm sorry.
No, no, that's fine.
The eighth, I have, um, this is spelling from the first page. Under six, the word umbrage.
I'm sorry, say it again.
On the first page, number six. Um, one, two, three, four sentences down, the word umbrage. Is that, that's gonna spell.
Uh, anything else? Okay. Um, motion to approve the minutes with the spelling correction. All in favor? Okay, now January 22nd.
Okay, so, um, we need to move through. I move through.
Ellen and Missy. Any discussion?
So I guess, but I feel that we had the discussion about, um, are we looking to provide space or are we looking to provide taxes? We may have two separate things, and I don't think that's clear in these minutes. So I have a suggestion to add for the bottom, just to add a sentence. Chair Cohen asked if we are looking at finding more space or are we trying to cut taxes? They aren't necessarily the same thing. I think, I think that was a good point and it's something I'd like to see reflected in the minutes.
Sure. Where, sorry, where do you want to add?
I was thinking of adding it, seventh sentence from the bottom. So it'd be the discussion's bigger than finding space. It is how do we cut taxes? And then I think after that would be a good place to put it.
Okay.
Okay.
That's on page three.
Yeah, and I, I, I'll give this to you.
Yeah.
I'm gonna rip it out. And then the other thing I thought was that, um, we had had a discussion, at least for me, it was kind of eye opening, where, um, we had asked the administration, like, are we okay with keeping things as we have it with the modulators? And not cutting staff or not looking at any of those kinds of things? And I know I looked over at Ms. Withy and she kind of nodded her head, yes. And that made me feel like, okay, then maybe we just keep things status quo unless the population goes up. And I don't feel like these minutes, um, reflect that. So I wrote down this, you can see if you like it. Um, and this I would put before the first motion. Ellen O'Donnell asked the admin if they would rather keep things as they are by keeping the modulators rather than reducing staff. Ms. Withy agreed. Ellen said, then perhaps we should keep things as they are, at least until the school population increases. Does that sound fair?
That seems like
Okay.
Oh, instead of nodding, I'll use my words.
Yeah, I think you did nod, though.
Yeah, I probably did, but you can't see nods on minutes, so.
On the first page, under B for Concord High School principal. Is that Tim Heber?
Sorry, say it again. Oh, Tim Heber.
Is it Tim Heber?
It's Tim.
Okay. That's what I go. Um, on the next page. Um, five sentences from the bottom, sign it should be put in guidance offices also. And then it says it should also, was there supposed to be a finish that sentence?
Okay. Um, anything else? Does everyone agree to the changes or does anyone else want to propose any other changes? Okay. So we will move to approve the minutes with the suggested changes of Ellen and Missy. If that works. All in favor?
I am.
I.
Dave.
One extension. Okay. Public comments? None. Okay. Agenda review. Um, I don't have anything else to add. We don't have consent items?
Yep.
No, I don't think we need another public. Okay, great. Um, review of correspondence. So there's nothing in the packet for this week. There was a piece of correspondence received today, but since we're publishing the packets now on Monday before the meetings, anything received after Monday is not going to be included in that week's packet. So it will be included in the next list of minutes. Uh, otherwise, there was nothing else received by the whole board. No consent items, okay. Onto immediate business, high school transportation.
Um, so first I want to thank Mrs. Bron for going out of her way to get to all of the schools. Um, it was a huge help. She also reached out to Co Brown. And thank you, Principal Witty, for also helping with our eighth graders. Um, I put a handout in your packet, but Amy did follow up and got a few more names. So I asked her to just give you the updated number, um, just because we have that for tonight. Um, do you want Amy to come up, please?
We did have a few parent changes, um, just before the fourteenth. Um, mostly with CBNA. So the freshman rule is twenty-three, sophomores is sixteen, juniors are now nine, seniors are at two, so the total for you guys would be fifty.
Okay, and Concord didn't change?
Concord did not change.
Okay. And last time you were here, you said that the maximum for like, not adults, but basically adults?
Basically adults, is fifty-one.
Is fifty-one?
Yeah. And with the undercurrent students for both Concord and CBNA, it would, and those parents that did not respond to the survey from other high school is a lot.
Um, we talked last time, though, about having something where people sign up, like first come, first served.
There is that about having some sort of bus pass, whether you charge for it or not, but then you also have to take into account, you know, special ed students.
Yes.
Um, and how all of that is going to come into play and how you're going to prioritize them and the incoming freshmen.
And we also did get one email, uh, and then Mr. Kristen and I, um, I think a parent brought, raised a good point, which is their upper class, because they had heard that we were discussing whether upperclassmen would have access and, um, you know, she made the point that my child didn't have choice when we went to Concord and it was a bus. However, my child still needs transportation as a junior. And, you know, we didn't have that choice and that option. So that was, you know, that's a consideration. We're gonna talk about splitting or how we're gonna give access to all students.
Um, do we know if any of the unaccounted for students are special ed or are currently doing special ed transportation?
I only know that because of my previous incumbent year.
Okay.
And at least students.
Got it.
So some of these fees will need transportation or need to be offered transportation.
Correct.
And we were, Amy brought up the point, and I agree, that those parents may not, I think they'll vote the survey because they have specialized transportation. Didn't think they needed to.
Yeah, I mean, I think that would have to be made clear that like, this is the option. There's not going to be a special ed transportation in addition to this bus. This is the transportation.
I think that there are a couple of students that could not ride the regular bus. And that would be something that would have to be discussed.
Yeah. And that we would keep those students on their current busing situation. So what does the board look like to do?
So we're kind of like two buses. We've said one's gonna go to each place. We don't have in the budget for a third bus.
Yeah.
So I think we need to come up with a hierarchy for how kids get on the bus. And and then we need to, I think, how parents need to sign up, and if they don't sign up, the kids aren't on the bus or not on the bus. And they, they have to know that if the sports is canceled, they can't just jump on the bus and go home if they're not a person with a bus pass. I don't know, I think we're gonna have to do that. I mean, we keep saying we're not responsible for providing, and we do provide it. So I think we need to provide it in a, in a responsible way. And I think we need to think about, I, I agree with the parent who there wasn't choice. Yeah, their kid should have a bus. I also think kids that are maybe three and reduced can't afford to get their kids anywhere else, should get it. A kid that's special ed that we have to require, they should get it. How we go about figuring that out, that's the question.
I'm worried, I, I continue to be worried about the twenty-four students and seniors who went to Concord with transportation, and it's always been there for them.
Yeah.
Um, and the thirty-seven unaccounted for.
Yeah, because that's a high number.
That's a huge number.
Do we know if any of these unaccounted portions are currently taking the bus?
And the fifty-nine that said yes, did people say yes, but don't normally take it just to hold a slot? You know, that's what was my other worry.
Yeah, because I mean, that's, I think the concern is that people will say yes.
And then they'll do something else.
And then they won't take the bus. They want it as a backup, and I think we'd have to make it very clear, like, this is not a backup option.
Right.
This is, this is how you're getting to school.
And there are parents that have signed up that I've seen out in the community that have said, you know, I saw my kid up, but it may only be a couple days a week.
Right.
I appreciate you signing up, like, you know, it's not my place to say this is what it's gonna be.
Sure. I mean, I think, you know, if people wanted to sign up for the bus Monday, Wednesday, Friday, or Tuesday, Thursday, or whatever, we probably could accommodate. Well, I don't know, then we're just going to have to pick up the bus.
That's gonna be too hard to try to manage as a driver, especially we give the kids ten minutes to get out of the building, get on the bus, and then ride there.
Yeah.
And you can't be micromanaging, looking at a list.
For sure.
And if we have a substitute driver, they're not gonna go with kids.
Yeah.
How much time does it free up if you do, if we did one, I don't know if the board's in this, this is just, if we did one stop somewhere, took the kids and came back? Does it short, how much would it shorten?
As the only stop?
Yeah, like, could there be two runs or is it like way too much time?
So it, it's, it would depend on which school you're going to. I mean, you could factor in, so I'll use Monday as an example, because it was bad weather after Sunday's storm, right? And we had the delays. So it took probably, I was switching because I'm driving to Allenstown this week and doing the high school. So, but it took us to meet up, we were late. Dawn and I were probably running about seven minutes behind our normal time just due to the weather. So you've got to factor in all of that. I don't know if that was time to get to Concord because I was on the other channel, the Allenstown channel, because I wasn't still listening to Tim Heber ride to Concord on Monday. My guess is based on the road, it probably took him closer to, I would say thirty-five, forty minutes to get there based on the road. So you've got to take that into consideration with the weather. And if there's an accident on Buck Street or on Route Three by PA, because that light, people, as we know, run that light. So it depends on where we are. When we get downtown Concord, you know, we come down Main Street and turn up Pleasant. So if there's, sometimes if Concord's having stuff, they close the roads, then we've got to loop way around, you know, by McDonald's and walk the back way and come down the backside of the street, or in Long Hill Field. So all of that cuts in to time, and then it's time coming back.
You said there are just two buses in the budget?
We haven't been able to get a third driver.
Right, but I just didn't know that. I never knew the final, yeah, that, is it still in there, but we know we don't have a driver or is it?
You have that extra bus and the bus we took it out of.
When does the Co Brown day start versus when does the Concord day start?
So Co Brown buses can start arriving at seven fifteen. Concord, um, we drop kids starting around seven-ten. Concord's open, I guess, around quarter seven, seven o'clock in the morning.
They're pretty similar.
Pretty similar.
They start classes the same time?
That I don't know, I haven't looked at the exact schedules of the two high schools to know exactly when the day starts. But when Kelly and I were looking at Concord, we build in that time to arrive between seven-ten, seven-fifteen, knowing that weather days and traffic and accidents, we have time to get them there. I believe, I want to say at Concord from what I remember, last bell was like, or first bell, whatever they call it now, was like seven forty-eight or something, seven forty-seven, something like that. So it's gonna be in the door by.
It's really, logistically, it's really difficult. The marketing that we touched up, that you should, and I talked about was, um, doing something like we did during COVID and telling your parents, just being honest, that we can't run two buses with the numbers. And if there's any way that you can transport your child, we're doing, we're gonna do one more count. Um, and please don't sign up for the bus, just any way you can help us. And that was kind of our pride to them when we had the COVID issue with the buses and people stepped up and did it. I don't know if that would help. I don't know how you're gonna, I don't know how you're gonna decide when you, we can't, you can't have just one bus to Concord and transportation was promised. That's kind of a
Concord high starts at seven forty-five. I'm just wondering if there's any way you can drop kids off early, Co Brown will back.
That's why I said it, could you do two? To Co Brown and then to Concord.
Yeah, and then Concord and Concord.
No.
That would be two hours.
And I don't, I don't know how early they can get there if the schools would let them in earlier.
Yeah.
And I know at PA we get kids dropped off at like thirty.
What?
Yeah, it's up to work and there's no bus hanging in, we're only charter. So we go to school in the morning, so it's
So I guess it could be a phone call to those high schools to find out what time they would actually let kids in.
Yeah.
Seven forty is Co Brown. So it's only five minutes earlier. It's surprising. Yeah, if, if it's possible that Co Brown could allow us to drop kids off earlier, then we could do one there and then that's two buses going to Concord.
Right, because the bus coming from Co Brown could start by Dale, about ballot and start on that side of town.
And Co Brown may only get like one stop or two stops. That would shorten their time too up and run.
We could do like over by like High Meadows, like to get that south side for kids and then do either uh, the Old Town Hall or like Tupperware Center or something like that where people can park safely and get kids loaded up. Because the more stops you are, obviously the longer the bus ride becomes.
Okay, so I guess what we need to do then is find out if those schools can take the kids early, if that's possible.
Yeah, could we easily do two runs?
Yeah. And then, and then if not, we do, I do think we have to put something out to the parents and say, look, we're trying to be fair, offering two buses, but we really need to know who absolutely needs to go and who doesn't. And I do think we need to give some preference to certain things. We don't need to make that public, but.
I need help from you finding out, like, if you could look at me, get, actually, me.
Look at you. Yes, super.
If you could get back to me with how early you think they would need to get dropped off. That would be helpful if I could reach out to Co Brown and go, hey, can you guys take kids at this time so that we can then?
Right, you would have time to then get.
Yeah, like how much time you would need.
Right. My guess is, is that if from Dale to Co Brown is about twelve minutes going up that side of Route Four. So once you drop, you need at least, I would say fifteen, because traffic's gonna be building up because you're making a lot of turn turns. So say fifteen minutes from Co Brown back to, at least to Dale. So, so you drop at seven forty-five, at six forty-five, so that gets you back on that side of town for seven. If you did two stops, two large stops.
Well, if you, if you have two buses, you could just pick up the kids on the one side of the town.
Right, that's what I'm saying. But if you did like an old center stop and then maybe like, um, down by Mr. Mike's or something, and then have the other bus start at like the Old Town Hall and do that loop. Then you probably could make it to Concord, you'd be running a little off from the other bus, which you probably could do a second run and get there for like maybe right at seven thirty-five, seven forty. It'd be pushing it, probably it could be done. That's if you could be leaving CBNA by six forty-five. Which is early, because then the kids are, then the kids are there almost an hour before school starts.
Yeah, I don't really think they can accommodate that on a face supervision, you know, like our teachers are on contracts to arrive at some time, so.
Doesn't need to ask just to find out, I mean, maybe there's a room they can put them in, study hall, whatever, so.
Kids, though.
It's a long way. And then you could, and then how are you gonna, at the end of the day, the kids get up at the same time? How are you gonna accommodate that? They do get up at the same time? Yeah.
Are there?
Two twenty-five and two thirty, thirty-five-ish.
Are there generally less kids in the afternoon because of sports?
So there, there are, our numbers have been running a little less, but again, sports get canceled.
Right.
You know, somebody's car broke down, like, that's why it goes back to the, the bus passing, like, you've got to come, all this is coming into play.
And I, I wonder if it'd be possible if the Concord kids could, like, do it the opposite way, pick up the Co Brown kids first, drop them off, and then go back and get the Concord kids, so they'd have to wait.
You'd have to have four buses.
Five minutes. Yeah, so pick up the kids.
But it would have to only be kids be assigned to that bus.
Right.
And then you could show them favoritism or whatever, because they, Concord's wanted a late bus for years with kids with sports.
So I don't think that would accommodate sports, because it's only
Yeah, they don't want to accommodate sports.
No, it's only sports, I'm just saying that parents for years have wanted a late bus to accommodate that, they couldn't get up there, that are struggling by, you know, work and stuff, so.
This would just be because we're, the one gets dropped off early, the other one gets picked up, like, I mean, it's just making it fair.
I don't know. And then the whole purpose of doing this is because we were listening to people who wanted a bus to both schools, which is great, you know, that's fine, but now there's complications. Complications, trying to do what they've asked for.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I think the only option you have, if you can't figure this out, is to let Co Brown know that unfortunately can't. I don't know how you're gonna
But we're still gonna, but we'll still have the, we'll have the problem next year. If it continues to be fifty-fifty, it'll be the next year. Like, this year, can we at least say that there's still a lot more students going to Concord?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
But next year, it's gonna be pretty separate.
And if they want a bus, then, and I know we haven't been able to get a driver, that's a whole issue, but we may have to consider, you want high school transportation, then another bus is gonna have to be put in the budget.
We can look at taking work in DCS. It's not best of the favor.
I mean, right, there is an extra
In the budget, if we do the fall budget, there's that extra bus.
There's an extra bus in DCS and
There is.
Yeah.
We're supposed to have seven buses. We have six. We've lived off of five.
And we use five.
Yeah. I think we budgeted seven. This, DCS has always had seven.
Yeah.
Oh, we've only ever been able to, this year we're doing six, but for years. Absolutely, when I first started, we did, yeah.
We always have that discussion too, if we magically found a bus driver, would DCS, would DCS need it? Or have they now done six buses for so long that
So many parents drop.
So many, at least some.
Like, and I don't even know if that would change if there was a
Could the Co Brown bus do some DCS kid? I don't know if that would rule out anything. Is there any chance of getting a driver realistically?
No.
Have things getting better at all? I think so.
Because it's not us finding the driver, it would, they would be applying right to you.
Right, Dale, right. I mean, there are people in training, but where they're gonna land, I don't know. I mean, Deerfield, in the scheme of things of all the towns, is in better shape than a lot of towns, than the, than the other towns. So I don't, but I don't know where these people live. They try to, you know, somebody's coming in from, I'll say Barrington, you know, they live there and they're training, they want to drive there, there's an open slot, they try to put that driver there. Especially if they've got kids in school, because that's the point. They try to, you know, do the childcare friendly option.
I can do too many things. Okay. So it sounds like we still need a few more things answered before we can really make a decision.
So what do you need from us at Dale? Is there anything else you need from us?
I just want to know what time, how early students can arrive at both schools.
I think, I think we need to know.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I don't want to create too much work, but if, it would be helpful to know how early kids can get there and if it is possible to map out like a potential route for a Co Brown and a Concord situation and what it would look like there and back.
For one bus for each?
One bus for ground is doing, also doing a Concord one.
Or, or what you were saying before, if one bus that does program, then do a Deer program.
Right, and then have two go to Concord.
Right.
Could it do DCS?
And then that would be later, because what time do you start here? Forget eight.
Seven forty is, yeah. Seven forty to seven fifty is when students are, yeah.
Right.
Announcements are going on, what's that?
You've got you, I was at the door, you and Brooke at the door.
Yes, seven forty, yeah.
Could be a route that drops off at Co Brown at even seven and then just comes in North Road.
Scoops up down that part of one oh seven, yeah. There's a route I had, Kelly and I kind of threw something together. Um, for the Co Brown, we were starting at South at the Corner Mill at six twenty-three in the morning and arriving at CBNA around seven fifteen. And then the Concord bus would start over by Pleasant Hill at six oh three and arrive at Concord around seven fifteen. That's with one bus going to each, with probably, I have seven, eight stops on here, just kind of through like larger fewer stops.
I think it's worth looking into having less stops too. I mean, I know it's a pain, you get your kids to the stop, but
It's sure as in driving all the way.
Yeah, right. Right.
All right, so we'll just find out how early and how late can they get there and leave, and then see what a route might look like for both Co Brown and Concord, and then a route for both Co Brown and here.
Yeah.
And then two to Concord.
And then maybe hold off and then maybe do the pleading to parents, like, we really need to know if you really, really need it then. We might want to say five days a week too. We, we need to get prep to the parents that really need their kids to go five days a week.
All right, so you want a CBNA and CHS route, CBNA and a DCS route, and then two Concord buses with an early CBNA, correct?
Yeah. Sounds like that might be a solution.
Okay. Well, I'll work with Kelly to figure that out.
Yeah, I don't know, I just spent a little time for Co Brown is, I just Co Brown and DCS, I don't know if that would be compatible.
So they end at two twenty-four.
Co Brown?
Yeah.
And Concord, they got the, which one do they keep for?
So Concord starts at seven forty-five and it ends at two forty-two.
I'll find schools about how early and late and let you know.
Okay. That'll be good. I'll leave your email. And it's almost a twenty minute difference up between Co Brown and some of the Concord. And it's almost a twenty-minute difference up between Co Brown and Concord. And when do you think you want this information by?
I don't, I don't think we're gonna be having another meeting until March nineteenth, so. Yeah, we're, everyone's on spring break this week, or February break. Okay, TBD, thank you. Okay. Uh, the next item is, there was a request to publish the manifest. Some community member.
Yep.
So I got an email, um, from Leah McHugh and, and with a link, I don't know if anybody else has seen, but the town is posting now their, I think it's the check register that they're actually posting. Uh, and the request was to see if the school could also do the same thing, so I let her know that, that would be something for the board to consider if they wanted to do that. Um, my concern, which I, which I told Leah, was making sure there would be a kind of a report that we could run, because our POs have student names on them and like our office replacements, so it's, I had to make sure we could run a report that didn't have any of that on it. Um, and Amber said there is a way to run just the check register, so it would say the check number made out to this, to whoever, an email. So there is a way to do a report. We don't currently do it, but we can settle it out if the board wants to publish that information.
How much more work is it?
Um, I don't know, I didn't ask her, I mean, you'd have to create the report and then you'd have to run it every time, then you get it into the paper.
And so they want the manifest at every school board meeting?
It wouldn't be the manifest, because the manifest has too much information, so it'd be the, I think it's like the check register. I think it's called the check register.
And that would be once a month, or?
That would be at the board, for the board to decide, yeah. I think the town is publishing it weekly, but I think they also need weekly, so I think they're publishing it in conjunction with their meetings, but I don't know how so.
Meetings as in select board, you mean?
Yeah.
Oh. They don't meet weekly all the time, sometimes it's bi-weekly. Or at their pleasure.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know at what cadence they're publishing it, or if they publish one, or if they publish multiple, I have, I don't know. I mean, our goal is usually, like, the first meeting we have is, is this meeting, and that's when we try to do all that business kind of stuff. Obviously, we only have one this month, so if we do that, everything will be. If you wanted that to happen, I can ask Amber to get it and get it ready for the
Yeah, I mean, I would love to, from the other board, I mean, I get a copy of the manifest, so, but I recognize that not every board member even sees the manifest, except for those who are approving the manifest every week. Okay, the manifest itself is very long and very detailed.
Yeah.
So when there was an original request to publish the manifest, my initial inclination was zero chance, because we have to take out every piece of information and then it would look like an FBI file. That would make it look everything suspicious then, then helpful. So just a black, 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 big number. I mean, this would say like, check forty-five, Amazon, five hundred and twenty-five dollars, that's what we'd use on a, on a registry board.
But what about?
It's right, I mean, it would have.
I mean, if I've won the catch the manifest.
It could potentially have like, um, crochette mountain. You know, we did that this much, and then all of a sudden, you know, there's one student, everyone knows, or one student going there, now we don't much, it's.
See, I, I, that makes me uncomfortable.
Yeah, me too. I'm wondering what the, what's the purpose? Why do they want this information?
They just, I think their request was more transparency, so they could see where the money is going.
I mean, we do have the budget update that, that was in there today, tells you how much money. I mean, that information's there. How often do we typically do that?
The expenditure report we give to the board, the beginning of each month, or on your business.
So that'd be like once a month, is that, I mean, and that's public, yeah?
No, it's not.
It's not. Would that be a better thing, like, public than?
Yeah, maybe there's a way to do a summary report of that, like if we condensed it down to just the eleven hundreds and the twelve hundreds.
How much we spent on this.
Twelve hundreds is all special ed, so especially the twelve hundred lines this month cost this much.
Because you do, you do need to be so careful about privacy.
Yeah, I feel very uncomfortable identifying areas of money where students aren't going. I don't want certain students to feel targeted, or people to say, we spend this much money sending a kid to this place, I think that would be incredibly toxic, and I'm not interested in doing that. And that was, and I shared that, but that was, that was my only concern, I, full transparency is great, but my, I just, we always think about kids, like the town's not dealing with students, that information is pretty generic, and which we have some generic, but we're okay.
Right.
And, and this is the reason why the audit is being done, it just demonstrates that we're doing what we say we're doing.
Yes, they look at everything.
Yeah.
To make sure.
So we're being audited, like all of these things, like we're voting all of our teams, and so it's organized.
Fuck, yes. I'm not opposed to doing maybe quarterly, a summary of where we're at, just for so we can see where we're at, special ed lines, subs, our salary lines, you know, like regular end program lines. To me, that feels sufficient, but that was not the original request, so the board needs to decide. If we want, we don't have to, we're not required to publish anything, none of this is public information.
And our money is going to different places than the town select board, like, we have different concerns.
We have a ton more.
Parents that go out for a bunch of them.
In particular, student privacy, so.
I, I would say, I mean, I'm opposed to doing the manifest for those reasons. Or even what you said, even what you said, check going this, I'm opposed to that. But I think that if, like, quarterly summary of where we are in particular areas, I'm okay with that. And I agree with Nate, I mean, we are, we do do an audit, we do, we do all these other things to show that we're, we do the money properly, but we have to be very careful about privacy stuff. It's not the same as the town.
So do you want that to be mine? Well, more is to find out from Amber if we, if she can run a summary by account line.
By, yeah, like twelve hundred is eleven hundred, yeah. I think so.
I think there's. I would think she could do that report, but, and then I can let you know at the meeting. Yeah, I think that's fine, I mean, I don't, I will, I don't think that will satiate what people are trying to get. But I don't think there is a way that will satiate what people want to get without them being on the board and being privy to more sensitive information than the public is, unfortunately.
So are the audit results able to be looked at by the public?
Yep, they're all posted online.
And how often do they, that's just like yearly?
I mean, yes.
Yeah, yearly. And we've, we've been behind, but.
Yeah, we're catching, yeah.
Yeah, I think we're, everything's written here except this past year, I think.
Yeah, we were waiting for final, all the audits are caught up, but we're waiting for final reports, I mean, before you're two, before you have the auditing stuff.
Uh, well, the check register. You would have to blackout things on that too?
Yes.
Yeah, because like if you have one, if you have one child going to a school, like an outplace at school, then it's obvious that that's.
Anything that can identify a student. Or less than ten students.
Who would know that?
A lot of people. I mean, sometimes the name of the school says, this school for autism.
Yeah, and you would just look up the school and find out, you know, what it's for.
Right.
Like, why are you saying a check's gone on the school?
Oh, yeah, obviously, yes, it's, it's, it's needed to be. But I'm, I'm saying, how do you know which specific child it is?
There aren't that many kids in our town who go to out of district places.
I don't know that.
If you have any kind of link to the school, you know, any of the powers, or you know, I mean, it's so, you might not, and I might not, because, well, I probably could, actually, but, um, and I'm not talking through this, I'm talking through my friends. But you just can't do any, like, that's illegal, I mean, you can't.
Oh, I know, I understand that piece, I just don't know how easy it would be to.
That information could get out.
Oh, no, no.
Right, and I would just, I would hate for families to feel any sort of guilt saying, oh my gosh, my child is costing this much money. Because that's unfair, it's something that we are obligated to pay for, and I would never want someone to feel any type of guilt about, about that. So if, you know, God forbid, people start talking about it on Facebook, or you know, spreading misinformation, or even factual information, I think there could be really unfortunate, um, results from that. The, um, I mean, the summary report, if you, you know, you'd be able to see like, oh, the school's budget for the eleven hundred lines this year was one point two million, and first quarter they spent five hundred thousand, then it might be like, are you designing your revenue amount a month? I would like give you that kind of, that information. It will lead, lead to more questions probably, because we do put our POs, POs in ahead, so we know where we're at, so it's kind of.
We put POs in ahead, we get revenue money.
Yeah.
I also know that, like, having been here, like, say, the science budget, a lot of times we don't, we don't spend that money until the end of the year, because we look at, what do we need for next year? And we put it in, and then we kind of make a budget for what we might want for next year, but we don't necessarily spend it all right away, we spend it.
Yeah.
So they might be, well, you, that's a hundred percent, they haven't spent any, what, do they even need the money? Yeah, because they haven't, you know.
Yeah, so I don't know what the goal, I guess I don't know what the goal is, other than just general transparency, is it to sort of monitor how much? That doesn't really give you any information, because it's different profile, you know, it's talked about. Is it, where is the money going? Is it, I don't know. I don't know, because, you know, the information is also in our budget, so we show the actuals from the year before, which shows where everything went, so I, like, I'm not sure that it accomplishes anything, except to give a very confusing mid-year update that doesn't have any context. I don't.
I think a general transparency is, people are, are really upset about their taxes, how, how high they've gone, things like that, and they're looking for answers, they're looking for something to make sense to them.
I, yeah, I'm not sure that this document will give them answers.
Well, it might give them a little bit of, well, you know, the board is, is willing to try to help us a little bit, and if it doesn't give them the information they're looking for, then it doesn't give it to them, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, I'd be fine with looking at the report and seeing.
Not everybody's an accountant, you know, and some people will understand some of it and some people won't.
I think we could do a draft and see.
I'll ask her to.
How people feel about it, and if it would actually answer any questions, or if it's just.
Just being able to see the numbers and say, okay. Yeah, okay, yep, we're being shown something, so you're not saying, oh, you can't see it.
Yeah, I do think there is general confusion about school year versus budget year, and that will be very confusing to people, but.
Well, maybe they'll learn something if they confuse.
I would love, I would love people to learn something, that would be helpful.
Yeah, it would be.
So, yeah, if we could do that, we can really.
Yeah, I think that would be true. I mean, we've not been that, I know what we're spending, I mean, that's the thing, but again, I know being one of the ones that sign off, that information is in there, and it can, and not only, like you were saying, you would want a family to be, you know, feeling targeted, but is it gonna set you up for a lawsuit?
For, for, I mean, if there's like a perp violation, yes. I think the summary report would take care of that, if it was just by. Right, like, obviously, in the budget, we post how much we have for contracted services. You can't possibly identify a student, or a particular student's costs by looking at the budget, but.
I'll have her run that, and then you guys can take a look.
Okay.
That sounds interesting. Okay. Review of board goals, um, I wanted to just get this on here to see what, how we're doing. I should have taken off this draft while, I don't even know how to get that off, so, I'll figure how to get it off. Because this was the final board goal that we approved in, September, maybe? Okay, so one A, we have created a schedule for Friday all presentations. We've had one so far, the science one is coming up next month. Do we have a third one scheduled?
We actually got two after that schedule.
Oh, we have.
We're not exceeding our goal.
What was the science next month, and then?
Then math in April, and then, um, ELA, literacy, ELA, in, um, May.
Okay. Great. So for one B, I hadn't thought about this, actually, because I just learned that there were student council elections. And I was wondering if the student, the new student council should be interested in coming to board at some point and doing a little presentation about these, yes. Welcome to government.
Yeah, they're not, they're not, it's, it's kind of like a, a, based on like more of a House of Representatives type thing.
Fair.
Um, but it's similar to a student council, yes. I'm sure they would love it.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, if we're looking for more opportunities to hear from students, I think that's a good group to ask and see if they wanna come, I mean, I wouldn't pressure them, if they really were uncomfortable about it, but I do think a lot of students don't know how the school board works, and they've never seen a school board meeting. Um, so if they're interested in civic engagement, I think it's a good place for the DCF students. Is there, there's an advisor for that?
Yep, Mr. McCabe, Deerfield House of Representatives, that's where that's from.
Is that something you would maybe vote by him to see if he?
Absolutely, mm-hmm.
If there was the board of directors of the town, I'm sure.
Yes.
So then, we have not created more opportunities for the board to hear from high school students.
Nope.
Um, does anyone have ideas about how to do that, or what we should do, or who we should invite, maybe do an open call for the end of the year, saying how to go? What do you think?
You can talk to the principal, who was just here, and just ask if there is a group of students who are presenting already to the Concord school board. And if there are Concord students presented to the Concord school board, then I recall, at least before COVID, there was a group that got together.
Yeah, they, they always did a presentation to the board, yeah.
And so presumably, a couple of Deerfield students could also be involved in that, and they could bring the same presentation to here about the same time as the Concord.
I will contact schools ten and, uh, the. And it, I, it might be easier to just do it like a quarter of the year, a couple times a year, like, end of the year.
Yeah, I mean, I certainly don't think we need to come through a bunch of meetings.
I would just think one.
Once, actually, yeah. I would love to hear from, um, Co Brown students at the end of the school.
Yeah, how did it go?
How'd it go, yeah. Yeah. Did it meet your expectations, is this advice, would you like, I'd love to hear it.
Type over them.
Perfect. Okay, building facilities updates and improvements. Removal modulars and spaces. We have not ident, well, we identified areas, things we updated and improved, but we haven't created a timeline for more articles or proposals for those things. Unit ventilators, we have. But that's on our capital improvement project, we have put it on a warrant article for this year. Um, electrical updates, I think are on the capital improvement project, but. You're beating a million years of the priorities right now, because you talked about within the next three years, I'm just telling people this is gonna be. Right. I do think it's worth, um, you know, while we're already about funding these things, I do think it's worth bringing up again the idea of potentially selling the property on Stage Road, um, if the board is interested, I I got gathered names of assessors, so I can sort of, we were gonna see if we could try to do this before the warrant article this year, and it was just not gonna be possible. Because we have to identify on the warrant article how much we would anticipate receiving as revenue for that. So, we need to get the property assessed, um, and I'm happy to get some proposals. Um, because it's going to cost money, I assume. I've not assessed.
You get someone in town that's ready to help us out, but I don't know if there's anybody in town.
So I can reach. We do. I reached out to a few of them, saying, do you know anyone who can help, and I have some names, so I'm happy to reach out, I haven't, because I didn't know what Co Brown wanted to do.
I think we had said too, that we wanted to meet with, like, we want to talk to the planning board, the energy committee, and, you know, are there other, like, is there something else that, that property could be used for, aside from just selling it?
Yes, and the conservation commission as well.
It can be used, that we own it, can't be.
No, but we can't, but if we come up with something that the town is like a progressive idea, then we would put it on the warrant article. Can we change this property for that use? I mean, we can't do that on this week. So we had talked about doing something like that.
Or you can sell it to the town.
Let's say, I still think we, I think we probably should still learn the assessed value.
I, I agree, I, I totally agree with that, so we know what we're talking about, and if we were to give it up by like selling it to the town for a dollar.
Right, so we can let people make an informed decision. So we're saying, you know, should we give this to the town for a dollar or should we sell it for, I'm not going to attempt to know the value of it.
Right.
But, you know, forty dollars.
No, I, I agree, I think, I think it's a great idea to get the assessment first, we know what we're dealing with. And then maybe, um, we can talk about if we want to reach out to those other committees.
It's, it's not a bad, it's not a bad idea for, to tell them you're talking about it and let them think about it during some time to like, hey, if this was available, you'd use in your group.
Well, if people are interested, I mean, I can, I know people on both the conservation commission and the.
Planning board. I think they just approve, though, I don't think they come up with the ideas, right?
Yeah, I think they do sometimes, because I know they've had, I mean, there've been some, like, cluster of about here in town.
The only thing I think the planning board would be helpful for, not the award plan, so.
The one that has an idea.
I do think that would be helpful, because they're going to be working on the master plan.
Yeah.
So if there are things that come up in the course of the master plan.
Right, that that property could maybe be used for as part of the master plan.
Do we have actual paperwork of what the transaction was about in any of the legal speak, when we purchased that?
I'm sure it's on the.
Anything to do with any of the.
I don't know that, but we had, we do, I looked at the warrant article, and it specifically says, we bought the property, we had that approval from the community, and typically said it was to be used for.
Educational purposes.
Yes.
Okay.
So, I, I looked that up, took me a while to find it, I have it somewhere.
I, I recall looking at the registry of deeds, um, because I was curious how much we purchased it for. So I think there, there are things recorded about, so we know who we bought it from.
Oh, yeah, obviously that, I just didn't know if there was more paperwork than that that said, you can do this, you can't do that.
Yeah, it's just the warrant.
I think it's just the warrant.
Just the article, yeah.
There's, I mean, there are also, R S A's dictating what school districts can and cannot.
Right.
So what we have the authority to do as a board and as a district is different than like a regular corporation. Um, so if that works, I'm happy to reach out to some of the assessors and see if anyone is willing to do it for free or if we can get some proposals if.
Yeah. And then you're gonna, are you okay with it's a board, okay, if we're doing that, okay.
I wouldn't make any promises.
No, 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 I'm going to be right up, that we, we are, we are looking for ideas, we're getting assessed, we may decide we want to sell it, if that's something we can do, but we just want to make sure that we're not missing an opportunity.
The assessor that works for the town already, do they have an assessment on it that anybody knows about? They must have an assessment on that piece of property.
I'm sure they have a tax assessment, which is not generally the same as.
I know it's not, I just wanted to know if we had that in.
Well, it's not taxed, I don't know.
So why would they?
I don't know. I don't know that they have that.
I'm not sure.
The last time a tax assessment came through, or whatever, three, three years ago, and they probably wouldn't have stopped to do that.
I don't think so, because it would have been.
I wonder if there's a certain criteria for that in the rules.
I'm not sure that a tax assessment would be relevant to for our purposes, because we would sell it for.
Oh, I know that, I know how that works. Interesting to us, we'd know if they had listed any reference in, like, his books.
I doubt, I doubt they have any reason, I mean, I'm sure they had it from when it was privately owned, but. That's funny, I don't know, but. Two thousand.
Yeah, it was before I was a teacher here. My kids were in high school.
It was when Peter was principal.
Yeah.
A one time.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, but that's sort of achieving our goals-ish. In progress, because, I mean, I think it does, I think if we do sell it, the money that we would sell it for would go for, we need to repay it something, so. Um, and then three. I have not done anything. No, that's me, and I, you know, I think it's a great goal, I'm just not sure what we as the board can do about it.
Yeah, I think the big thing, I know before it was like the grants, you know, like, um, you know, we got, we got the school garden grant last year. And I was going to look into, there was a grant to get a, like, a blender for the cafeteria and milk, and I just forgot about it, so. But they, I think they do that quarterly, I'll look it up. Of course, that might all be gone too, just for, so. I was wondering if that, if our solar, the grant that they're hoping to get for the solar, is that going to go away?
I don't know. Um, I did. Yeah, I did, I did have correspondence with, um, our folks at the solar, um, and, uh. Oh, it was Senator Hassan's office, actually, they were looking at any programs, or they came across our grant and asked if it had been impacted, and I said we haven't started it yet.
Yeah.
Um, so I know our solar, our solar person reached out, because I'm sure they don't want to go too far, they're not going to get the funding for it. Right, so we haven't, nothing has come officially to us about it. And the last thing I heard was that any grants that were already awarded would not be affected, but then I also heard, but some people were dealing with funding, being helped, so. We haven't done, but I don't think, you know.
Anybody has really been, so I've been worried about that.
Yeah, I was too, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know the implications of, if we did put solar on and then funding it, but hell.
Well, they, they.
I mean, they, they applied for the grant, but through us, because that's where the whole reissue came from.
Close, keep our fingers crossed. Um, okay, does anything related to the board goals that other people want to discuss? Okay. Um, board updates, P T O. Not present. Is that for?
Uh, we had a superintendent candidate on interview day, and narrowed our candidates down to two. And you're probably aware, is it Monday, Monday next?
I'm not.
You're not aware?
No.
Oh, this is a good thing to be aware of, next Monday.
No, no. No.
Yeah, yeah, not school vacation week.
Right.
No, not this Monday, next Monday. Six, there's going to be an evening forum, community forum.
Oh.
March sixth is a Thursday.
Thank you.
You are.
March sixth is a Thursday.
Next Thursday, March sixth. Not Monday.
Not Monday.
Two weeks from tomorrow.
Don't worry, I'll repeat it when I'm my principal's report.
Two Thursdays from tomorrow.
Okay.
Uh, community, um, uh, forum at P A to meet the two finalists.
Okay, awesome.
Um, there will be opportunities, um, and this is open to all Deerfield, all S A U, um, community members to go and get, um, sort of questionnaires, evaluation forms, to meet with the two finalists. Submit those, and then that, no, no, then the Monday after that.
The tenth. Fourth Thursday, that's the Monday.
This is Monday the tenth now, that's, I don't know. All right, that's when there's going to be a full board meeting, which is going to be one more evening to, for the boards to interview, final interview with the two finalists. Followed by a meeting that will be the decision. Move ahead with more.
Um, are, so, board members are, will be having an interview, but should we also attend the public forum or not? Will that be annoying?
Totally optional.
Okay. It won't be annoying, I think, it's, it's more, well, it's a more informal setting, that you can just kind of interact and ask questions, that's whatever questions you want. Because the board interview is going to be more structured and everybody's going to have one question or two, you know.
Is anyone making a flyer?
Yes, yes.
Can I have it when it's ready?
I'm not making it, but.
Okay. Um, so the chair of the S A U board, who is in charge of the search, is Carrie Dean. Yeah, so if you want to email her, just ask her, make sure she circulates back, obviously, I've not been in front of her.
How does that work as far as the final vote? Does each school get one vote?
No, everyone, so whoever shows up.
Oh, whoever shows up.
One vote per person.
So if you have, okay, so if all of us from Deerfield show up, we feel strongly enough.
And, and some of what we were discussing is that this is, as we, picture taking Patty's, so it is Deerfield and Pembroke, because we're going to be most directly impacted by this decision.
So all ten should be there.
Should endeavor to be there.
If everyone showed up, which is not what I'm, if everyone showed up, it would be twelve, you would need twelve votes.
Okay, so the tenth of the board needs to be interviewed, and then what did you say then of next?
That evening.
That evening.
Of that same evening.
Is the.
Is the vote?
Is the vote.
Okay.
And looking at the responses from the Thursday night, community input, the press will be back.
Okay.
Great, that was a great update.
Do you know what time it starts on Thursday?
Six.
Six, I would imagine six.
And information is going to go out.
Also on Monday?
To the community.
I think that's the board meeting, yeah, is that six, I think, right?
For March.
Let me see, what can I tell you? Yeah, S A U full board.
I'll, I'll.
We want to make sure parents know.
Yeah, yeah, I want to close out.
I'm assuming you'll send it home once Carrie sends it.
On the garage. Great. Cool. Principal's report.
Yes, so this covers January ninth through February nineteenth, today, February nineteenth. Um, Wednesday, January fifteenth, we start, we, so I'm going to start this with an S A U leadership, and I'm going to end it with a little S L A, S A U leadership, because we had leadership today as well. So, uh, we had S A U leadership, that's when, um, Mr. Grieve and Mrs. McConnell and I, um, go to the S A U and we meet with all the other administrators in the district. Sometimes Mr. Grieve and Mrs. McConnell aren't able to come, but, um, Thursday, January sixteenth was Appreciate a Dragon Day, and our P T O always has done a nice job the past couple of years of creating a dragon, I appreciate a D C S is. And kids get a, um, just have a wonderful time and they deliver them around the school and we hang them up and, um, it's a great, it's a great day to appreciate, um, our people that are doing such hard work here. And friends as well, they appreciate friends in the building as well. Uh, Wednesday, January second, we brought the spelling bee back to D C S, so we had, um, a full round of spelling bee, uh, in the cafeteria. We were able to actually, um, live stream it into the classroom, so the kids, so, and, and parents and guardians were invited to attend if their child was a, was one of the bee members. So, um, we did have a, uh, congratulations to Hayden, an eighth grader here, who was our champion, and then a fifth grader, Sam, uh, is our runner-up. Um, and will attend if hate, if something happens to Hayden and she can't go. Thursday, Jan.
It's like another state.
Yeah, there's, she'll go on to the next, yeah, level, mm-hmm, and I think that's virtual too, I don't know if they do that in person, I don't know. Oh, a couple of times, good for him. Um, Thir- Thursday, January twenty-third, uh, we had a craft afternoon at Blooms and Brews, they opened up Blooms and Brews for us in the afternoon, um, in Susicau. Came and did a cupcake workshop with some staff members that signed up. On Monday, January seventh, was our professional day, we had TechTruck, that is our tradition, um, it has become a tradition here in our January, for our January P D day. And, um, Brooke Ann Petraselli and Beth Moss Chu usually run the morning portion of the, the day, and, um, I think I've mentioned this a couple of times, but a few years ago, Mrs. Petraselli put a survey out to the teachers and said, you know, what kinds of things do you need? And overwhelmingly, the teacher said, we just would like some time to dig into some of these technology resources that we have. We're so, we're so lucky and so fortunate to have so many, um, uh, platforms to, to utilize, but we never really have the time to dig in like we want to. So that's when TechTruck was born, and, uh, this, every year is a different, um, theme, and this year was A I literacy. Um, and the staff were able to experience the student side of Magic School A I and as well as the teacher side of Magic School A I, as we, as you know, preparing our students for the future. And really empowering our teachers with the tools that A I, um, that they can utilize, because it makes our, our jobs much, really, I mean, you can put anything into this Magic School A I and it creates slide decks for you. And, um, you can put some standards in and see, you know, that it'll create a worksheet for you, it'll, you can put a reading, ask it to create a reading passage about a particular topic for a second, you know, an eighth, an eighth grade student that might be reading at a sixth grade level, and it will produce that for you. So teachers have been using it for lots of wonderful, as a wonderful resource. Mrs. Moss Chu did, um, her presentation was on media literacy, uh, as you know, Mrs. Moss Chu is teaching our sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth graders media literacy. Um, this year, she started last year with our sixth graders and then incorporated our seventh and eighth graders this year. Um, she's teaching our, our students strategies to help combat misinformation and disinformation. She did a really cool, um, project with the eighth graders about usage, um, like the usage of social media and shared those results with us, shared them with the kids too, and they were, they made some commitments to reduce their time, um, on social media platforms. Uh, we also, in the afternoon, with a P T O provided a delicious breakfast spread for us, um, in the, uh, they, uh, always do something really nice for us on our P D days. Um, in the afternoon, we met as a staff as we continued to work on the climate culture survey from the S A U, it's just continuous work that we're, um, chipping away at. And, um, we presented a, um, we, basically, the presentation was on building positive self, uh, school culture and creating some behavioral, common behavioral expectations. Um, so as a grade level, we met, uh, everybody met as a grade, we met as a big staff to go over some things, then, um, they broke out a grade level to talk about, um, their top behavioral challenges. And then we were looking at, um, some common themes for a grade span, so our K to two teachers, um, ta- talked about some common themes as well as our three through five and our six through eight. Tuesday, January twenty-eighth, uh, Concord High School was here with some students, they did a student presentation and got the students that are going to Concord High School prepared with their booklets for, um, course selection. And went over all those important dates, Wednesday, January twenty-ninth was snow day number one. Um, Thursday, January thirtieth, um, just so the board knows, we did do a shelter in place practice drill. Um, I sent an email out, uh, to the community after the drill was completed, just to let them know that when it started, when it ended, and, um, that it was successful. Um, in addition to that, Concord High School that evening did a eighth grade presentation for, um, our parents and guardians, it was virtual, uh, so they had, um, I think almost every parent was able to, was able to attend. Um, Monday, February third, we had an all-school meeting, our fifth graders hosted our all-school meeting, and that afternoon, we had another craft afternoon, this is what happens when they're covering a month. Um, plus, we, um, did a spiritware craft afternoon that afternoon, there were crickets and cricket tools and sweatshirts and presses and, I don't know. It was all, I couldn't figure it all out, but the people that were in charge knew what they were doing. Um, Thursday, February sixth was snow day number two. Friday, February seventh, we had our eighth grade career day, that is a tradition here, um, that we've been doing for years and years. Big thank you to all of our participants, that evening, we had a middle school dance. Wednesday, February twelfth, was a second practice drill, so each January, the, now the January, we didn't do a January fire drill, the January fire, uh, drill was shelter in place. Our, uh, February, it's been a little cold, so we did a lockdown practice drill. Chief Duquette was here along with Officer Newell and a new police officer in town, Officer Espinoza, um, so they came, um. We went into a practice lockdown drill, I had sent out an email prior to that to the community with some information, the reason we do it, some language that teachers were encouraged to, um, use with their, with their students. I sent the same email, pretty much the same email to staff as well, um, because it can be frightening for students, as we, as we well know. Um, and then after, I sent an email following, as a follow-up to let them know that when the drill started, when the drill ended, and, um, that it was a successful drill. We encourage teachers to practice locking their doors, um, because, you know, sometimes they, you're not, you're not used to doing that, so, um, it gets away from you. And we did have a few teachers that reported that their, it seems like their locks are, you keep spinning and spinning and spinning, and you're not sure if it's locked or it's not locked, so, um, Chris Kufos, Mr. Grieve, Mrs. McConnell, and I also walked around to, um, make sure, actually, I stayed in the lobby in case we had any visitors, which we did. Um, so, um, but they walked around and, and Mr. Kufos took notes about any doors that had any issues, um, there was really only one door that, um, that he's. There was really only one door that, that he's, that he's going to take care of. Thursday, February 13th was snow day number three. So we are up to three snow days and we've had two delayed openings. So we're, we're pretty safe so far. And vacation next week. So that's a whole week of, it can snow whenever it wants next week. Because of snow day number three, we ended up having both Valentine's Day and the 100th Day together on Friday, February 14th. We had kids, they actually did bring changes of clothes, some children. Yes, the, yes, I'm sure you did. In addition to those two wonderful days, we also had advisory day. That's done three times a year. We do advisory day in the fall, advisory day in the, in the winter, and then an advisory day in the spring. So our sixth graders stayed actually at school and did activities in school. The plan was to go into the outdoor classroom and have a fire. But the wind and the temperatures were not cooperating. So they did a ton of really fun stuff in the building. Our seventh graders went ice skating and our eighth graders went bowling. And in addition, on Friday, the 14th, as I give my PTO update, they provided a wellness bar for the staff, which was so well received. They provided tea and honey sticks and fruit and cough drops and Purell, you know, hand sanitizer and cream and all the things. So it was, it was, like I said, very well received by staff. In addition to that, the PTO provided our staff with a Random Acts of Kindness T-shirt. So it has kindness words around it. It says Deerfield Community School. So we took a couple of group pictures at the end of the day. Staff were told that if they wore their T-shirts, they could also wear jeans. Mr. Oxner would probably know what that, how exciting that is and our two teachers over here. It's, they love to have a jeans day, so they got a bonus jeans day out of that. We did have a two-hour delay on Monday as well. And a big thank you to our PTO for the Random Act of Kindness T-shirts. The Random Act of Kindness Day was actually on Monday. So we have some things going on in the building for Random Act of Kindness Week with our kindness magnet, which is our eighth grade magnet. It was also a CRB meeting, which Ellen will probably go over, will go over. Yesterday, Tuesday, February 18th, one of the superintendent candidates came to do a site visit here at Deerfield Community School. He also visited the three schools in Pembroke as well as the SAU. And our second candidate will be visiting, doing a site tour after vacation, that week after vacation. And like I said, we ended our day today, February 19th, with SAU leadership again. Just quickly, I'll announce, this is so long, I'm sorry. Our class of the weeks have been Mrs. Chase in kindergarten, Mrs. Maynard's kindergarten class, Mrs. Angelo's first grade class, Mrs. McGlaughlin, Mrs. Perry. And this week, we are in second grade with Mrs. Moss Grober. I've also done advisory visits with Mrs. Flanagan and Mrs. Nelson, Mr. Luciano, Mrs. Sands, Mrs. Moss Chu, Mrs. Petroselli, and Mrs. Peasley, and Mrs. Berry. They are sixth grade advisors. And this week, on Friday, I'll visit Mrs. Hannah, who is one of our seventh grade advisors. Just some things that are upcoming before the March 19th meeting, since we don't have a March, beginning of a March 5th meeting. We will have a middle school pep rally tomorrow. Friday is our Kids' Heart Challenge and our Jump Rope and Hoops event. That is a huge tradition here. I think I have pictures from Nancy shoot jump roping my first year that I was here. So that is always a big event and the kids do, Mr. Ruest and Mrs. Radcliffe do a wonderful job. It's a big fundraising event and you can usually donate about 12,000 or so dollars to the Heart Association. It's a huge event here. So the kids have been practicing jump rope. And the middle school pep rally tomorrow, staff and students will be versing each other in basketball. So good luck to them. We do have a preschool meet and greet coming up right after vacation on Wednesday, the 5th of March. That's from 3 o'clock to 4 o'clock. That will be, that's been posted on Facebook, but also in the bridge. So anybody interested in coming in, seeing our preschool is more than welcome to join us. And then Nate did a good job pulling through. The March 6th date, that Thursday, will be our Superintendent Community Forum at PA. Staff is actually invited prior to that, from 4:30 to 5:30, and then it's open to the public at 6 o'clock. Hoops Classic will be starting on March 10th. That's huge. And the building is in and out. People are in and out all week, all evening. So that will start on March 10th. And don't forget that there's no school on March 11th. It is our professional day and it actually is at the SAU. We're going to have a whole SAU day that day. We'll all, we'll all be heading to Pembroke Academy for that particular professional day. And last but not least, happy February vacation. Sorry, that was really long and it's three pages and I kept working on it. I kept changing and I kept trying to reduce it and so, thanks for listening.
Yes, thank you so much. Curriculum review board.
So the first thing they started talking about was the curriculums are getting really long and really big.
Yeah.
And they realized that there's things that are the same for every curriculum. So for instance, like the mission statement of the school, what competency-based education, how they do the gradient scale, those are all the same. And then they were looking at, this is kind of new, I mean, this is sort of different with Deerfield. We do essential environments, essential actions, and essential, there's one. Essential understandings. And some of the newer people were saying they couldn't find it. They didn't know what it was. It was in our old curriculum. And so basically, what it was decided to do was to have the basic definition of what each of those are, which they eventually found. But then under each curriculum, your essential actions and your essential environment, it might be a little different, say, for a science class as it might be for, say, your literacy class or your math class. So what the group decided to do was to say that in your curriculum, you would mention, you might have like, okay, what the guiding principle is, competency-based essentials, all those things. And then it would be a link that would take you to what the definition is. So it's the same for everybody. Every curriculum has it the same. And then when you get into the actual curriculum, then you might have the differences for what it needs to be. So I think we, we voted on that and said that we would all, that's what they would do. Okay. And then they talked about, Epsom does these curriculum, curriculum themes. And what they do is every week, the teacher just kind of puts, this is what I'm working on. Like working on, you know, this kind of algebra or whatever it is. And they would send it.
Month, every month.
It's every month. I thought they did every week, but then it's reported every month.
Correct. Yeah, that's fair. Yes.
Okay. So the teachers do it every week. They send it to Amy, who's in charge of the curriculum. And she puts it all together and then they make a public document every month, this is what this particular grade is working on. So they kind of showed us with Epsom.
And subject, everybody does it, P E R, everybody.
Every subject. And so basically, that was the first time that they had, you had already mentioned it to people. They've talked about it in their committees, but it was the first time the curriculum review board actually talked about it. So they're going to go back to their committees and kind of figure out, is that something you want to do? So the decision hasn't been necessarily made.
Right.
But what it does is it gives them sort of a scope and sequence about what they've done every year. So they can go back, it's, it's a document. She'll save it for, this is the 23, 24, or this 24, 25. And you go back and look at it. It doesn't mean that you have to do the same thing every year, you know, at that particular time. It just gives you an idea, oh, this is what I did last year. This is what I did this year. So. An interesting idea. Okay. ELA is not, they're supposed to have their curriculum to the point where it's supposed to be finalized and we're supposed to vote on it. But they don't feel they're anywhere close to that, that they really need to wait until next year. So what they're going to do is they'll move, move the curriculum to next year and probably be looking for readers in October. So that'll be, that was something that we talked about, that we'd probably be having come to the board. Okay. And then the other thing, you may have to help me with this a little bit. So their curriculum document, it's built on the Common Core, but it's not, not exactly, it doesn't exactly follow it. Because they add other things in, they do different stuff. And so I guess under the state guidelines, a school board can approve a different curriculum other than what they specifically have as their state curriculum. So they wanted me to bring this back to the board. I guess we don't need to vote on it tonight. We can vote on it when we see the curriculum. So what it does is it allows a little more flexibility. So you can do more. Like say if you're, if you're working with the science of reading, you may do things a little bit differently than how the Common Core has it. It does, it's still based on the Common Core, on what you need to do at each grade level. But it's more based, it's a specific curriculum to the school. Does that make sense? Because I had a little trouble wrapping my head around it.
That's the way it's been though. I've never, is that the purpose of the curriculum?
It's coming out of Ed 306. This is the, what Amy was talking about.
Oh, okay.
So it's like a new thing that we would have to vote on to approve it?
Mm-hmm. And, and if we're not, if we don't have, a lot of schools do not have a curriculum review board. I, I think Nate, yeah, and, and many schools have modeled our CRB, have modeled our curriculums because in our district, even in the district, there's not curriculums for people to pick up and look at. So I, I have to say that we've gotten a ton of feedback from our, from our district in terms of what a different CRB really does, has made for Deerfield. And they've tried to implement it in other schools in the district. So the, and the, so from that is the, what Amy was saying is that the Ed 306 has certain standards you would have to have in there. Or a school board can approve your curriculum if it, if it's different than that.
So we vote, that's something we've already, kind of all, but do we typically?
So when it gets to the point where ELA brings the curriculum to us to present it, then we would need to, yes, we approve this curriculum.
Mm-hmm.
Right? And then that would be okay.
And then we're checked, yeah, we, they.
Check the box.
But we always have to stick with Common Core.
Yeah, Common Core is really, a lot of people think Common Core is the curriculum. It's not. Common Core are standards and then you vote the curriculum.
Correct. Yes.
But yeah, that's a state line.
But this new Ed 306 has, I don't know if it's reduced.
Reduced.
Yeah, so we're looking to have more than what Ed 306 is providing.
Because they, they know it's coming down.
Correct.
Okay. And then the last thing we talked about, Science presented, and they know they're doing a presentation for us coming up. So they were talking about how they could show the progress. Because as you know, we saw the math scores before. They're not very good. They're going down. But you've got, I'm sorry, math scores, the science scores.
There's got to be connection somewhere.
Math scores are fine. The science scores, but the problem is, I mean, you're only doing it fifth and you're doing it eighth. And then there's reasons, and I'm not going to, I'm not going to steal their thunder because they're going to come present. But they feel there are a lot of reasons why they're not doing well and they're trying to address it. But one of the things they're doing is, middle school is looking at taking their summative assessments and figuring out how can they use those to determine how they're doing in those main areas within the curriculum. You know, what are the competencies that they're doing? And so I'm not going to really say more than that because they're going to come present it, but I just wanted to get enough so it's good for thought.
Just to feed off of what Ellen said, that, you know, that's, we all know that good educators, we look at multiple points of data. And the science SAS is one point of data, but we don't have an eye ready for SAS, for our science. We don't have, you know, another benchmark outside of the summatives. So that's.
So they're trying to come up with their own benchmarks to see how kids do and how they're progressing.
Correct.
And, and one of the big things is they feel that the test right now is really not even looking at that, the way they tested. And they'll talk more about it.
Yeah.
That the whole testing process is a problem. So.
Yeah, thanks.
So we'll hear. They laugh because he's like, yeah.
Because they do it again in 11th grade, right? Yeah.
That's all I have.
Perfect, thank you. All right, on policies. So K E C is the policy that was referenced when the committee was talking about the. It's a little bit reconsideration. Thank you. That was tied to the, the library materials.
Yeah, I did.
Policy and sort of that, out of the one that the S E B developed to make sure we had a separate policy in K E C. So that we did what the recommended language was from the committee, formatted that and put it in the drive for you.
I like it.
And it's on as a first reading, but because you've been looking at it and referencing it along with the other policy, I think you could wait the other two readings because even though it wasn't on the agenda, you would talk about it.
Yeah, we talked about it quite a bit.
So you're certainly welcome to approve that tonight if you wanted to. And then the J F was the high school selection where, did you guys talk about these?
I'm happy to be doing it.
Yeah, I just thought about, like, you guys actually have policy. You can do this. Do you want to do it?
Sure.
Need to ask her out.
Yeah, sure. We can just go sort of run through them and then we can decide what to do with them. But the J F is the one that we had been going back and forth about, language regarding the top of hanging of it. And last meeting, we decided that's not where we're going at this point. So we took that out. And so that's, that's ready to be, to be moved as well. So the I J L is the one that I brought last time. And after working in the committee, talking with the personnel, different, the district committee and, and we kind of cleaned that up. And so that's the cleanup version of what we talked about last time. So any other questions? But I think that's ready to go. Patty, look at your question about OSHA.
Yeah, I was just wondering about OSHA, just because I know that when I did chemicals, material safety data sheets are all done by OSHA.
So I think the reference to, back to the department end is because it's a school and then the department that directs you on all the regulations for any organization. So it would be covered under that.
I saw it still had that, so I figured it out.
Yeah, I did. Yeah, I did. It was. So I'm fine with that. Yeah. I think I made a couple of edits on that one and referenced the facilities director. Oh, no, I was still on the chemical one. Sorry. I just wanted to point out that I did change that to facilities director.
The right to know one, I think that the only question was, what, like 10 cents or 15 cents?
Yeah, that was one of the, one of the questions. And the other question is the board having the right to, hold on, yeah, the policy. So you can, you're supposed to charge your actual cost. So we have it at 10 cents. And it could pretty easily be justified to change to 15 if you wanted to per copy. So that's something the board needs to decide. And then under number eight, which can be a little bit more difficult, is the, the change in the law that allows charge for electronic records. And that's completely up to the, up to the board if you wanted to do that. I think there's been some conversation since that law was adopted about, you know, there's not a clear guideline on, oh, this is what you should charge for this. It's pretty nebulous. And then it can kind of get into an argument with the public, like, well, how did you come up with this and why are you charging me for that? We've always done copies. So unless the board is really interested in adding any cost to that, it's certainly easier to just leave it up to copies. But digital communication, even though you can justify it, it's pretty much the way we do things now. And, you know, you're not allowed to charge for someone's time. So it's really only the time that's put into creating the digital communication. So to start charging for that, I just feel like it could be up to us.
I would say the only thing, like, if we're just emailing, that's fine. I don't think we should charge for emails. But if someone is requesting a large amount and they need it on the USB drive.
Yes, that's right. Shouldn't charge for like.
Yeah. A disk or a USB drive or whatever.
And we've, and Josh is pretty strict about not, we don't let people bring in their home and to plug into our computer.
Yeah, well, they might have a virus.
If it was a very brand new one.
We, we usually park, and we get, they're really cheap.
I didn't know if somebody arrived with one in its packaging, like they had just left Staples.
Yeah, I don't think, I would say pretty. We try to keep a package of them from Staples and honestly, that's not even something we charge for, but we can, you know. Because when you start saying like, you owe me a dollar fifty for the USB, best, I know. You know, if, if we have a large, it's pretty irregular that we have those.
Right.
Once in a great while we do. And it used to be more expensive years ago.
Right, because the USBs used to be a lot.
And when you have a CD, you have your burner for someone and, you know. Electronic communication is pretty easily available now. And, and people understand, I, you know, my response is always, I don't have these documents. So you have the option, you can come in and review them or I can print them for you. But if I print them, I have 500 documents at 15 cents a copy. So you should tell them in advance, you know, this is, you know, happy to do it however you want and you get their permission before you do anything. Or I have all of this and if you want all of it, I can put it on the USB and that's, this is my question. Yes, you just give, disclose it upfront.
And you, do you need to have the exact amount for the USB here on the, on the policies? Because right now you have zero.
Yeah, they're all zeros right now until, and to see what you guys wanted to do. But if you want, you know, you could certainly say that you would have to pay for the USB device, that would be some cost or some things that it wasn't. I wouldn't want to put a fixed cost because who knows?
Right.
Day to day, how much they are. But we do, we get, keep this one. It's in Staples and we'll be back. That'll be, so. So that's something that, do we want to do 10 cents or 15 cents, people?
10 cents.
Say it again?
10 cents.
I don't have to go to the regular feeling either.
It's 10 right now.
10 cents. I don't think it's that common that we're printing out.
No, it's all digital now.
It's all digital now. Most of the great while, people want the paper, um, and we sent them and just tell them how many copies they have. I'm okay with 10 cents.
And then just to add in the thing about, uh, that they needed a USB, whatever the cost of the USB is.
Okay, yeah. What do you have a cost?
There isn't a cost.
Well, you're gonna move IKF then, would that change? Oh, no, not IKF, EHR, sorry, let's move EHR with that, uh, with that change.
Yeah. Are you moving it?
I would move that.
Are you gonna do it now or you wanna go back after? Should we move all of them?
Uh, yeah, let's do them all, yeah.
You're gonna mention all of them?
So then IKF, um, is, if you look at it, it's like two sentences just because we, we don't have our own.
It was empty, I'm like, what?
No, there is something there, but we don't have our own high school graduation. Like, we don't have, so we have to just, wherever we send the kids, they have to abide by those policies.
So any of your high school policies, that's gonna be the paragraph that's there.
That's why it was not.
Got it.
Well, there's something there, but it's just.
But I was, I mean, I'm looking for, you know, just going through like four pages.
Yeah.
Uh, and then JJIC, um, that was the relettered one?
Yeah, and, and that's, that's, um, I think I would leave that for now. We've been going back and forth, but given all the changes in, um, inters班级 athletics right now.
Yeah.
But I think the guidance from the School Board Association to all of you was to talk to your legal counsel to see which version of the policy you would want to adopt because it is a required policy, but there is a couple of versions out there right now and things are evolving. So I think I would leave that one until we get advice from Dean, from the whole SAU. Like, this is, yeah, this is what I want you guys to come up with.
Yeah, cause there's a house bill, but then the, the dent part chucked down.
And executive order, and so we don't want to be making those decisions.
Right, I agree.
So, some of the advice, yeah. Okay.
All right, so any questions on any of those?
None for me.
All right, other stuff, I, I'll move.
Oh, I was curious about one thing. Um, I'm sorry, the JJIC, whoops, I just, um, it ref, it references JJA, but I went onto our SAU site and looked at policies and there is no JJA, I couldn't find it.
Yeah, but sometime, that comes as a reference from the School Board Association and I asked for those to be removed when we don't have them and it probably just got missed. Cause usually we, we would just leave applicable board policies. And they say, for example, JJA, well, you don't have that. So it would just say applicable board policies.
Okay, so that'll be, that'll be wiped out, okay.
Yeah, and sometimes references get missed, but. We, I do try to, I ask her to go through and if there's a policy reference that we don't have, we'll move the reference to it.
All right, so move those third readings at the bottom there. I'll move IJL, EDCH, EHR, and IKF.
And JF?
Not, no, I'm just going with the bottom ones for now. It's just with those four.
All right, they're required.
Yeah, they're required from the HSA.
I'll second.
Any questions?
Any discussion on any of these policies? Okay, uh, all in favor of approving the policies listed in third reading or required by law?
Hi.
Hi. Um, all right, so then we'll move, um, JF also, is a third reading?
Okay, any discussion about approving policy JF? All right, all in favor? Hi, hi.
Um, and then KEC, I don't know, is it worth going back to? I don't know that the school has just looked at it. This was something that I took some of the HSA stuff and put it with sort of the school's ideas.
I think Amy shared it, oh, with the committee.
She saw this one. Well, she shared a version like that I was working on kind of a month ago. I don't know if she's seen this one.
Just wanna hold this one?
I feel like it might be worth waiting on this one, just moving it to a third reading for next time.
Just give it to her to make sure that's the version that they saw.
Yeah, so I would just say move that to a third reading for next time.
Boom. That is a third meeting. Okay, informational items, um, for those who just don't know, there is a candidate night tomorrow, man, for school board candidates, town candidates, student candidates.
Six.
Would encourage everyone to go, the public is welcome to ask questions. Um, and I don't have to sit up there and answer questions, so I'm pumped about it. Um, also just wanted to acknowledge that this is Nate's last meeting.
Oh.
And I just, I, you know, obviously I have not been here for your entire nine-year career on the board, but... But I wanted to thank you for all of your hard work and leadership throughout the year term.
Yeah, we should have gotten you like cupcakes or something.
We did a lot of cupcakes. I have failed cupcakes for both department members.
Well, I think both years, the meeting that canceled, that would have been the last meeting and that would have.
Nate threw things off. I mean, I think last year was a snow one, I think it was, you know, it was a snow.
But now I'm canceling it in advance, so we can acknowledge you. So thank you so much, Nate. And I hope you know how much we all appreciate you. And we may still have to vote you out.
It's okay.
But we'll see him, you'll be at the one on the, uh, two, right?
Yes, I will, that'll be my last night as a board member.
Wow. Oh, yeah, cause voting is the next day, March 11th. Okay. So, and then, uh, for whoever gets elected, our next school board meeting is March 19th. So about a week after, um, the election, you'll need to get sworn in, whoever is elected. I will send a very lengthy email about, welcome to the school board, here's 400 videos for you all. Um, and then it will, so I'll be on first meeting, March 19th with a new member.
Can I just bring some, something up? I don't know if it's the right place, but just, I thought informational. I was just curious about, um, at the school deliverer session, somebody talked about putting art and music out in the modulars. And I just, I kind of heard that and I thought, well, that's an interesting idea because then all the classes could come in, you wouldn't have to worry about kids going back and forth to the bathroom because you'd have a teacher picking them up. I don't know, I'm just throwing it out there, wondering if that's kind of a possible idea that would work.
Yeah, I think, I think it's a bigger discussion.
Oh, it's definitely a bigger discussion. I just wanted to kind of, you know, throw it out there because I heard it and I thought, well, that's interesting. I hadn't really thought about that and that would bring all the students into the building, which we've talked about wanting to do.
We can turn it around for the next, I don't know.
I think Carrie has said it.
Um, all right. Yep, so the flyer about voting, does, doesn't it, um, a mailer?
Voter guide?
A voter guide.
Yeah.
I did the comments.
You did?
Yeah, okay. No, I just didn't know, yes.
Did it when it got down?
Uh, the comments were very light this year. They were mostly the same as last year. It was like, this is the operating budget, it, the increases I give to X, Y, and Z.
Okay, cause that's what I was wanting, cause like, obviously I wasn't that deliberate and I'm sure some of that information came up for people, like, okay, this went up because of this one up. And this, and I wish there was a, more that we could tell the people that we're sorry a lot of this went up too. But it's, it's not because we're trying to, um, yes.
Also, there was, um, there was something that, um, Mr. Marshall put out in the general ether of Facebook about teacher salaries, saying how the salaries were, um, you know, at this point, like 15 years ago, and now they're way above the average. And I'm like, that doesn't sound correct to me. So I had asked him if I could please see the data, because it was so tiny, you know, I just couldn't read anything, and asked where the information came from. Um, the post ended up getting deleted, it never got posted. So I was thinking of emailing him for that information.
You are welcome to contact whomever you'd like.
I just thought, I mean, like, to know where that came from, if there's anything to it.
Yeah, I mean, if, if there, we could certainly add it into the agenda too. We obviously publish all of the, um, staff salaries with our budget.
Yeah.
Um, but if there's a need for a bigger discussion, yeah.
I mean, I just, I find it hard to believe because I know that we were like, when we increased, we were way below the state average and that's why we really worked hard to increase. And I find it hard to believe that we're that much above the state average now.
I do think it will become relevant because teacher contracts are up next.
Next year.
Right, so it is something we definitely need to know.
Right, yeah. Something we'll need to start looking at.
Yeah, okay.
For the next term.
Okay, I'll send it to you.
Um, okay, we are on to public comments. Public comment.
Oh. I said you were gonna read something.
No.
So Ed Cross and Josh, your information, um, on the property that you were talking about earlier,